Just to rehearsal.
And you're on, Bill?
Thank you. Welcome. The school committee called the meeting to order approximately six oh three this evening. Immediately, we went into executive session. Now we're out of executive session. And I want to welcome any of the public that is either listening to this or seeing it by having linked on to us through our. Montague, Gil Montague Regional School District website. Tonight, I'm leading the meeting because our chairperson is not able to be here. I'm Vice Chair William Tome. I go by Bill or whatever. In any event. Need to get the right page. Let's start with. The. Public participation, I should mention, I believe, is the school committee policy BEDH. And it's been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. Let's move to important events, and I think Brian, that brings you up.
Yeah, I don't know if, John, did you get anybody who wanted to speak publicly this evening?
Yes, there are three speakers who've requested to speak this evening. Joseph Katz, Ramona Latronica, and Heidi Schmidt. And I see at least two of those are in attendance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I overstepped there, John. So would you introduce whoever or whoever would like to speak first?
I believe I've seen Joseph here and also Ramona. And Joseph asked first and Ramona second and Heidi third. That was the order in which I received the requests.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, and John, I think I asked first because I thought the meeting was last week, so.
You had me worried though, because I texted Brian and all of that thinking, oh, my gosh, but.
Oh, well, thank you again for being prompted and reminding me that it was actually this week. I appreciate that. But here, I'll get started. So I'm excited to speaking with you today, following our Unit A members voting to ratify the tentative contract agreement. We do not always do a great job in general, or especially in schools, acknowledging and celebrating the hard work accomplished before moving on to the next task. So I just wanted to take a moment now and say, I know a lot of work and time went into getting to this point. And thank you for your commitment working to reach an agreement with our union. I've been accused of being Pollyanna in the past, but I believe this contract negotiation experience will benefit the ongoing Unit C negotiations for a fair contract with a living wage structure. In other words, I believe our GMEA members, District Central Office, and you all on the school committee are prepared to reach a timely and fair agreement for our unit C employees. Oh, Tab, you might want to mute yourself. I believe there's still work to be done supporting our community of educators, families, and learners. Last meeting, I talked about our school committee holding informal forums during this school year to provide time for more casual conversations. I'm going to continue reiterating this because I believe it's essential to building trust within our district and fostering a workplace where everyone feels respected. This is essential not only during contract negotiations, but also during the day-to-day operations of running a successful and functioning school district. Please share with our union times and places for these conversations to start back up. Our union members remain eager for the opportunity to share with school committee members their experiences in the Gil Montague Regional School District. I also spoke last school committee meeting about the issues regarding HVAC within our schools and the need for thoughtful proactive solutions. This may not be the most appropriate venue to discuss this, and I think it's important to have this conversation. Again, these building operations issues are common in school districts across the country and have been exasperated by decisions made long ago. As a reminder, about eighty percent of rooms in our high school and middle school do not have AC. This is an obstacle to learning for all students and staff during periods of extreme heat and humidity, and a potential violation of DSC's program and safety standards for substantially separate programs housed within our high school and middle school. Now, I'm not here today trying to lay blame on anyone for this issue, and I want to share that personally, I was disheartened to hear at our last meeting that our district needed to return thousands of dollars to the state designated for HVAC improvements due to our failure to finish projects within the grant's timeline. It was shared that after we returned the mine to state, we can reapply for money through the IVAX grant, and I'm hopeful. But that makes me nervous because we can never guarantee that money will be available again in the future, or that whoever reviews our application will approve us again. I worry it could be a red flag to future reviewers that we failed in the past to fulfill grant requirements. I'm frustrated that we had thousands of dollars in our district to address longstanding issues and failed to act. I should have said this at the top, but I'm a union member and a unit A in our middle school and high school, and I'm a resident of Turner Falls. It was reported in our last meeting that the issue in failing to fulfill the grant were due to supply chain issues after placing the order in June. I wonder, however, when our district was awarded this grant. And after learning this, my next question would be, why did we wait to order parts until June when the work needed to be completed by the end of August for us to keep the grant money? I don't know the answers to these questions, but they really suggest to me a failure to plan, and that that's harmful to our schools. This failure impacts our staff and our students, and it reflects poorly on our district. I think it's indicative of the lack of support and respect our faculty are reporting. I do not think this has to be the norm going forward, or it is even necessarily representative of our district as a whole, but work needs to be done to correct this dynamic. We cannot continue operating from a reactionary place of missed or fumbled opportunities for district wins. And so, school committee members, I encourage you to make yourself available to meet with school employees, visit their workplace, and begin planning for proactive solutions that we all can take to support our district. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and effort. John, would you like to introduce the next?
I think Ramona is next. So if Ramona is still here. I see.
Ramona, we're not actually able to hear you very well. Are you speaking?
Can you hear me at all?
Yes, a little bit. It just chops up a little.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Wonderful. I'll speak nice and loud. Okay, hello, my name is Ramona Latronica, and I'm the elementary librarian at Gil, Hillcrest, and Sheffield. And I'm a unit. I'm here to share my thoughts on how integral Unit C is for the success of our students and our schools. I have worked in many districts over the past seven years and have seen that our Unit C staff, our front office staff, and our paraprofessionals are really the true backbone of our schools. They are those employees that see our students day in and day out and year in and year out. Without them, we are losing a major part of our school community. And I have seen over the past few years in this district, many of our Unit C staff have gone above and beyond to really make sure that they are giving our students and our school communities everything that they can. This is now the start of my third year in the district, and in that time, I've seen many employees come and go and have held many roles myself. My first role in this district was as a per diem substitute, where I made a hundred and twenty dollars a day. Very early on in my time here, I was offered a job as a paraprofessional at Sheffield Elementary School. I was told that with my master's in elementary education, my five years of teaching experience, and while holding a professional teaching license in the state of Massachusetts, I was able to work for fifteen dollars an hour. That is ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents before any taxes. That is twenty dollars and fifty cents less than I was making as a per diem sub. For me, it was a no-brainer that I would not be taking on that role. An employee in the district who has over twenty years' experience. Before taxes, she makes one hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents a day. A penny less than the per diem sub, but still. For someone to be able to come in and do that compared to someone who has been working in our district for as long as that person has. Based on the current district website, there are at least six open paraprofessional job postings for the elementary schools alone. And many of those paraprofessionals that we do have employed are being pulled as substitute teachers because we do not have substitutes in our district either. It is important that we continue to support our Unit C members, who are, again, the backbone of our schools, and without them, I see that our school communities are weakening. I urge you as the school committee to support Unit C in what they deserve and what our school community and our students deserve.
Thank you. And Heidi Schmidt is next?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think, I don't know why my camera's not working. But hi, I'm Heidi Schmidt. I'm the president of the GMEA. And I don't know if school committee was going to talk about it, but last week or the week before, I think it was the twenty-seventh, Unit A ratified the tentative agreement. So we will have a contract for Unit A, which is really awesome. And it feels really good. People are very relieved and feel a lot better knowing that they have a contract coming. And so while the Unit A is finally done for the next two years, I guess, we're still right in the middle of Unit C negotiations. And as Ramona talked about, we are facing shortages in the Unit C contract area. And we're currently in negotiations, but we're hoping that we can move the wage scale along to attract these much-needed positions. We're hoping that we can make it work hopefully soon so that we can get these positions filled and that people can start making ends meet. They have been waiting for a contract for a while, and hopefully we can make it so that they can get closer to a living wage. Also, what Joe talked about, hoping that school committee can have some more conversations with teachers and staff, it would be really, it would make a difference if school committee could start coming and having regular conversations, maybe, you know, informal conversations, forums to find out what's going on from the teacher perspective. And with that, I will share the time. Thank you.
And I believe Heidi was the last of the requests I received for tonight's meeting.
And I'll just say thank you, Heidi, for your comments. All right, moving forward, I believe, at this time. It does come to finally important events other than public participation.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, October eleventh, is an early release day for professional development across the district. This coming Friday, from five to seven PM, the Gil Elementary School Fall Bonfire will be held at Gil. Turner's Falls High School Spirit Week begins on Monday, October sixteenth. I'm sure Sina will share a bit of information about that. There's also going to be a COVID and flu vaccine clinic held at Gil Elementary on Tuesday, October seventeenth, from three thirty to five thirty PM. Turner's Falls High School will hold its homecoming dance at the end of the Spirit Week on October twenty-first, from seven to ten PM. We will then have another early release day for professional development on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. And then the Friends of Hillcrest and Sheffield Trunk or Treat event will be held in the Sheffield parking lot on Friday, October twenty-seventh, from five thirty to seven PM.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Yeah, certainly.
So I'm pretty sure this was after our last meeting. If not, hey, it bears worth mentioning again. I attended the middle school open house. I didn't make it to the high school, even though it was in the same place, and it was so very well-attended and so well-organized and so positive. And it was so great to see how the teams work so well at the middle school, and it was just really uplifting. And I just want to let everyone know, like I said, if I said it last week, you know, again, because I'm still thinking about it.
Thanks, Heather.
Anyone else? Anything else? That brings us to the highlight of the day. Our student representative. Change seats.
All right, awesome. The ceremonial changing of the seats. All right, so I have quite a bit because October is definitely one of Student Council's busiest months of the year, besides for like Unity Day. So it's this week, this Friday, we're starting off, we are doing a tie-dye event in the school during our gap period. I believe all the different advisories are going to be going outside and tie-dying shirts with their class colors. So everyone has a shirt to wear for our pep rally next week, which will be exciting. I'm really looking forward to that. Apparently, it used to be a tradition, and then I'm not exactly sure who brought it back, but I believe it was like some teacher who mentioned it, and I'm really excited about that. I think that's a great idea. That's going to be fun. Spirit Week, yes, you mentioned it, does start the sixteenth, goes through the twentieth. I don't remember if I mentioned our spirit days. I'll just go through them again real quick. We have some fun ones. So the first day is going to be Monday. It'll be Massachusetts Spirit Day, so we're going to, I'll wear our Massachusetts merch, get some Dunkin'. It's unofficially called our Mass Hole Day. Excuse the language, but that'll be a fun one. Tuesday is going to be Barbie and Ken in honor of the movie. You know, everyone loved that one, so it's going to be pretty fun. Wednesday is going to be barbecue dad versus soccer mom, so anyone can choose either of those, and that'll be silly. Thursday is going to be Rhyme Without a Reason, which is where you choose a partner and you have like, it's kind of hard to explain, but for example, like you could have pink and ink, so one person would be dressed in all pink, the other person could be like all black, something like that. So it's like a saying that's like that rhymes, and one person dresses as one thing, one person dresses as the other. That you have to be pretty creative for, so I'm curious to see what people are going to do. I'm kind of scared also, I'm not going to lie. Friday is just class color day, pretty simple, but we have a pep rally that day, so it's nice when everyone has like their class color on and we sit in our sections. So that'll be fun. Today, we had a fashion show at our all-school meeting to show the different days, so different members from the student council like dressed up in one of the spirit days and went down and showed everyone our examples. That was pretty fun. And also, this isn't really student council matter, but I thought it was pretty fun. Every, about every week, Mr. Chapel, one of our teachers, I believe he does like theater art sort of thing, but more like the film perspective. They make something called the Weekly Show. Some of you may have heard of it. And it's just a group of students that come together and they film different things around the school, and every episode has something different to talk about. But this week was pretty kooky. I don't really know exactly whose idea it was, but there were two students from the school, and they were making smoothies of the most disgusting things I've ever seen in my entire life. They had like tuna fish and like Ben and Jerry's ice cream and apple juice and yogurt. It was disgusting, but they drank it. So you know what? I don't know, but everyone looks forward to the Weekly Show. This one was particularly disgusting, but usually it focuses more on like school events and school spirit. This one just was like a fun challenge, though, and everyone looks forward to that. In addition, we have the Haunted Hallway, which is another student council event that we run, which is a community thing. Anyone can come. We host it at the high school. We have our own student actors who dress up in scary outfits and will scare you. It's like a whole immersive experience. You know, we decorate a certain hallway. And it's fun because for all ages, we have it so like if there's a group that goes into the hallway that has young kids, we'll alter it so young kids can enjoy it and not be too terrified. We also have hallway wars, lots of hallways. Hallway wars, we do every year. Each grade has to pick a theme based on their class color and then decorate their hallway based on whatever theme they choose. I don't know what every grade is doing quite yet. They haven't all announced it, but I know my grade's color is pink, and I believe we're doing Barbie land, but also like the Ken land from the Barbie movie, and it's kind of like a callback because I think two years ago, we did Barbie Dream House, but this is like the revamp of it, so it's going to be pretty fun. Let's see, yesterday, my class also had our annual walkathon, which was very successful, of course. We meet up at Unity Park and we walk down the bike path and back to raise money for, this year was just to raise money for our class because we have a pretty fancy class trip coming up. Some students are going to be going to Florida, which is pretty awesome, but it's a pricey one, so this was going to help some students who needed a bit of financial aid for that. Tomorrow, on the half day, the seniors are going to be painting our parking spots, which is going to be super fun, so each senior gets assigned a certain parking spot in the lot, and we get to paint it however we want, so I'm really excited for that. We have some students who are going to help provide paint, which is really nice of them. Let's see, Annie is happening, the musical, so that it will be happening in November, the show, but we're currently in rehearsals. I'm in it myself, and I'm just in awe of some of these middle schoolers, because this is a middle school heavy show, and then we're going to have our high school heavy show later in the year. But these middle schoolers are just like, I don't know, they're just incredible, really, really talented, and I'm super excited, very impressed. My class are also looking for a new advisor currently because our advisor, Donna Fowler, is unfortunately resigning. She's going to be leaving, I believe, early November. I'm not exactly sure. But so we're on the hunt for someone new because senior year is a pretty big year, so we're going to need someone strong to lead us and help us through until graduation. One thing I did want to mention real quick is our school cafeteria food. I think I may have mentioned this once or twice in the past, but it's something that's, to me, becoming more important. I do understand that we have some open positions right now in the food department, so I get that they're not at their complete like highest level right now, which is totally fine, that I get that, but it's gotten to the point where some of the lunches are definitely not very nutritious. I think we have like P Doritos for lunch. It's just not ideal, but I get that we're in a tough spot right now with like lack of positions, but it's tricky when, I think we can do it, though. I think we can. A salad bar would be a great addition to have back and just a little bit morph in that department, because last year, we ended off on a really, really high note, and I would love it if we could get back to that level. The end of last year, we had a lot of different options, like hot lunch, like we always had at least two hot lunch options, and then like a bunch of other things too. It was awesome. So I think we can definitely work towards that. And yeah, other than that, I believe we're going to be scheduling a school committee student council meeting soon. We have those about once a month, and I know some students are looking forward to that, to talk to you guys firsthand, which would be awesome, great way to communicate. But yeah, that's what I got. Sorry, that was a lot today. October is very busy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sina.
A good example of speed talk.
Got to stay awake when she's talking.
That's true. Superintendent's report.
So in my report, my brief report this evening, I have a number of thank yous. First, I want the Student Services and Family Engagement Office would like to recognize community volunteers Mark Thomas and the Social Justice Community Committee of Our Lady of Peace Church for the donation of forty backpacks with school supplies that benefited students in each of our district's schools. Thank you also to our district groundskeeper Eric Williams. On the afternoon of Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, groundskeeper Eric Williams had just left work for the day. On his way home, he witnessed an accident at the intersection near Scotty's. Without hesitation, Eric pulled over and provided immediate assistance with his knowledge of first aid, waiting with the young person and their friends until public safety arrived. Eric stayed on the scene to provide his observations. Thank you to Eric for this selfless act in supporting an injured member of our community. As Sina mentioned, Beth Fortin and I have met a couple of times to try to identify some dates. Obviously, the Student Council, as Sina had mentioned, is very busy in the weeks to come with planning, holding and planning a variety of events. A variety of events, and in addition, shortly thereafter, we have breaks at the end of each week. Two half-days at the beginning of November for parent-teacher conferences, and then obviously Veterans Day getting in the way. So the first meeting for this year to be held with students will be on Wednesday, November fifteenth. We've planned to do it remotely during the gap period, which is nine ten AM to nine thirty-eight AM, and I'll discuss that again at our next meeting as a reminder, and then send out an email just prior to see if people are able to attend that meeting, and we'll send them a link. I wanted to say thank you also to Stacy Langnick for organizing the Walk Bike and Roll to School event, along with the Department of Transportation's Safe Roots to School. We'd also like to, in taking the time to thank Family Outreach Coordinator Stacy Langnick. Last Wednesday, the weather cooperated, and many parents and community members pulled together to walk with students to Hillcrest and Sheffield Elementary from two gathering spots in town as part of an educational endeavor to help students learn collectively how to walk to school or to and from school more safely. In addition to Stacy's work in coordinating the event, we'd also like to thank Maureen Pollock from the town of Montague, Heather Shav, Brenda Decker, Jenna Wild, Dorinda Bell Up, School Resource Officer Dan Miner, Fire Chief Todd Brunel, Deputy Chief Kyle Cogswell, as well as Captain Luke Hartnett, James Carmichael, and Robert Hawey from the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, as well as administrators Carrie Heathwaite, Sarah Burstein, Diane Ellis, and Jean Powers. It was really wonderful to see a group of people pull together so early in the morning to help our children be more safe in their walk to and from school each day. And then we will plan to have, hold some of the next few school committee meetings in person. However, we do, we will, may continue to hold meetings remotely in the future as needed, as long as we're able to bring quorums. Thank you, Bill.
In person.
Jacqueline?
I was wondering if you were going to address the math teacher situation in the high school or the middle school that I read in the Montague reporter?
The positions are posted, and we're going to hopefully in process of hiring to replace those positions.
Do you have a possible timeline?
Specifically, they're not on the agenda tonight, but please proceed.
As soon as we possibly can, one position is already open, and we have a substitute currently in the position. And then, as Sina had mentioned, around the beginning of November is when Ms. Fowler will leave, and both of the positions are posted, and we're hopeful to be interviewing some candidates. I believe we have one interview scheduled this week.
All right, thank you. I just want to update the Urban School Committee.
Okay, thanks, Jacqueline.
I think it's also fair to note in all of these situations that this is not strictly a local issue. It's really a regional issue or a national issue, whether it's teachers, nurses, paraprofessionals, administrators. There are a lot of people that are no longer of my particular group that are no longer in the work stream, and some of those were teachers. This has been forecast for quite a while, and it is something that we definitely need to address as we go forward, but I'm just saying that we're not alone in this kind of a difficult situation, and I'm sure the committee and certainly the superintendent and the principals are doing their best to control it and/or at least resupply our workforce, if that's, excuse the term, but you understand what I mean. So thank you. Anyone else on the, on any unrelated issue? Since we're on that right now, then can we move forward to the business and operations report with Julian?
Hi. So I have a few things on my report for you. E and D is the first item, and we have submitted our E and D, and we're working with the Department of Revenue to get that certified. It'll be right around the same amount that we had certified this year. Our operating statements, those two operating statements in your packet, we have one for fiscal twenty-three, and that shows our finals, final numbers. Couple of the numbers that I'd like to highlight is our charter reimbursement. You can see at the top of the page that the charter reimbursement went down, which, you know, it's never good news when revenue goes down, except in the case of charter revenue, it is because they are reimbursing on increases on the charter expense. So if our charter revenue is going down, that means our charter expense was also going down. We're now having new charter students going out. So we had a significant savings in our choice and charter this year, which means our choice and charter numbers are improving, which is. which is one of our goals. We've been working on for many years to improve our choice and charter numbers. They've, they've improved both the charter and choice going out and the choice coming in. So we have more students that want to come to Gil Montague schools and we have less students that want to leave Gil Montague schools. A couple of numbers down at the bottom of this report and the revolving account balances that I also want to highlight are our school choice revolving. So you see that that number is growing. And one of the reasons that it's growing is because we're setting money aside. We're spending less of the money that we're getting for school choice revenue. So that way, when we lose our Esser funds at the end of this fiscal year, we don't fall immediately off a cliff. We have some funds to help us in fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, fiscal twenty-six. And then I can move on to, oh, I also wanted to point out the cafeteria revolving fund. So because the state is offering free lunches for all students and they've been offering that at a higher rate than we would otherwise get with CEP, which is community eligibility, which gives our students free lunch in our schools before the state and had this as an initiative. We were already getting free lunch, but now we're just getting more money for each of those free lunches. That's what that's doing for us. And so in the past, cafeteria revolving accounts have really struggled to break even. And so now we have some surplus in that account so we can upgrade some of our equipment in the cafeterias and you know, not have to worry as years go out that we can't afford to buy the food, food costs have gone up and pay the staff. The transportation revolving fund we've had for a few years, we, we take some of the revenues that we receive, we set them aside for a future year to use, and then we use them in the following year as part of our budget. And so we did that in fiscal twenty-three and we did that again in fiscal twenty-four. The fiscal twenty-four operating statement, move on to that one, that what, what we don't know yet, there's still the unknowns. We don't know what's happening with our unit C negotiations. Our special ed out of district placements, our choice and charter enrollments, both in and out, and then potential emergencies throughout the year. So it's really early for an operating segment for fiscal twenty-four, but we do our best to try to give you a estimate of where we think we're going to, what we think that'll look like by year end.
I, I had one question. I noticed you have an eighteen thousand dollar deficit for the Irving tuition already. Is there something about that?
Nope. So when we create the Irving tuition, we do a calculation for Irving tuition and we'll be doing that next month. Or in about a month, we'll be doing that. We're working on it right now. We need to finish our end of year reports, submit our state reports, and when we have that, we have the numbers to calculate the tuition. And when we calculate it, we base it on the students that are enrolled on the first day of school. And then we bill Irving for the students that are actually attending school each quarter. And so those students change. And so those numbers do go up and down throughout the year as students move in and out of town. So when we built this budget a year ago, we assumed that, you know, people wouldn't be moving out of town. We have to assume a number of students that we think are going to tech and the number of student sixth graders that will come to us in seventh grade. So all of those are estimates. And so as I now create the actual tuition, you know, I'm doing that calculation now that the year is over. Then I look at the students that are actually attending and I redo that calculation to see where we are. And so in fiscal twenty-four, it looks like Irving's going to pay a little bit less than what we had initially anticipated simply because of changes in students and changes and what our estimated tuition was.
All right, thank you.
We're going to talk more about that next, I think at the next meeting, I may have the tuition all set. And then you'll get a better picture of what that looks like. But as we're setting that actual tuition, it's been a year since we built the budget. So. Okay. Okay. The other thing I wanted to alert you to for fiscal twenty-four is I have heard that the state revenues are down and so we could be looking at some potential reductions in state aid, chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one, our transportation reimbursement. It could hit circuit breaker. I'm not really sure where it could hit. And maybe there won't be any nine C reductions. Maybe the state won't have to reduce their budget. But if they do, that's one other thing that we need to take into account when we're looking at our operating save, that that could potentially happen. And then in your packet, you also have the expenditure report that shows line by line the items in there. And finally, I have our fiscal twenty-five budget calendar for you. So we'll be working on that coming right up. Um, as soon as I have information about preliminary revenues, I'll be bringing those to you. Usually I can bring you something in November, the end of November, so I will keep you posted on that process. But if you take a look at that, that schedule and if anything doesn't end up working for anybody, if we need to adjust some of those, you know, the things that we're talking about at those meetings. We can, this is just a draft. We can always adjust some of those items. And then I have one item that I do need to vote on and that is some student activity funds that we're closing out. So a couple of weeks ago, you voted on student activity accounts that would be active this year. And so these are three accounts that still had some funds that need to be closed out because they were not, they're not valid accounts. They're not accounts that have been used in the past few years. And one of them is a graduating class. So the high school guidance has a balance of a hundred and seventeen dollars. That'll be transferred to school student council. Class of nineteen has a hundred and fifty dollar balance. That will also be transferred to student council. And video production has a four dollar and forty-five cent balance. That'll be transferred to the general student activity fund.
Um, can we do the two student councils as one vote and then the four dollar general as a separate vote? Does the committee want to choose to do them all at once?
Either would be fine.
All at once works.
I'm sorry, what Heather?
I'd be happy to make a motion for doing all three at once.
He made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. We need a, a roll call vote, please. Uh, Cliff Spacher?
Yes.
Heather Katsoulis?
Yeah.
Janice Katsoulis?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. John Erminger?
Yes.
Laura Lee Adams?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did I leave anyone out? I don't think so. And myself, I left myself up. William Tom.
Bill, Wendy Thompson has joined us.
Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry. Thank you, Wendy.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one more thing, Bill, that I'd like to share. So last, I believe it was the last meeting that we talked about, the HVAC grant that we applied for. Um, and maybe I wasn't clear, I'm not sure, but that was a three-year grant. So we applied for a three-year grant. And the way some of these three-year grants work, the long-term grants, is you do need to reapply for them each and every year. Now, that doesn't mean that they're going to get turned down. They're not going to be denied because they were already approved. They've already approved this three-year grant and we have three years to spend the money. And there's, there's a lot that went into this grant. Nobody dragged their feet or anything, you know, we got bids, we had to work with the state to get the bid approved. There, there was a lot going into the process. So you know, I just want everybody to be aware that we do have these funds. We just don't have them right now. We also have jobs that cannot be done during the school year. And we had a lot, we had a lot of action going on last year with building projects. So you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into some of these projects, not simply calling a vendor and having them come in and put a, you know, piece of equipment up on the roof. So we will reapply for that grant. We will get it approved because we've already been approved for the grant. It's just a matter of paperwork to get the money flowing again as soon as it's ready.
Is it perhaps an issue where um, the grantor is suggesting that if the, if the work has already been done, then they'll take whatever money is not spent back? Um, not that you can't reapply for it, but the, I mean, is that part of the thinking you think on, on their part?
I, I'm, I think they need to keep their year-to-year grant separate. The state does. And so that's why we apply for it. If we can't spend it, then we return it and then we reapply for it. So their, their grant years are separate. So, but it is a three-year. The funding has been approved. It's just a matter of resubmitting an application to get that funding back in the second year.
Still need it. You're just applying.
We absolutely need it.
Don't need it. Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, the equipment is on order and so hopefully the grant is approved, reapproved, put back out there so we can apply for it. So it will be reapproved in time for when this equipment becomes available.
It's probably a, an aspect of, uh, supply chain chaos.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thanks. Thank you for that information. I also want to add, just to point out and reemphasize, E and D is a an account that is based on surplus rather than an account that is actually budgeted for. And so every year there are some accounts that have a surplus. They automatically go into E and D or potentially go into E and D. And then any excess beyond the five percent of the current budget or the past budget, whichever it is, uh, is returned to the towns if appropriate. Uh, Heather?
There it is. Um, so Joanne, is it true that in two thousand nineteen, we were awarded two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for the IVAC grant? So we spent most of that and then the fifty-nine that we returned because we have to, to reapply to, are we only getting that much back?
No, we're getting the whole two hundred and whatever the, the.
Eighties, yeah, it's two eighty-six, seven fifty-two. Yeah.
Right. So we did apply for it last year. It is good through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. We didn't have to do anything this year. And when the state put the grant out, they knew that the timing would be difficult to get anything done in the current year. But we tried anyways. So the two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is for five different projects that, you know, we have to put together and we still need to add the bid for many of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Joanne? Budget or otherwise? Okay, let's move on then to, uh, school committee reports. And the first thing there is the um, warrant approvals. We have five warrants. Uh, I'll list them off now. Warrant for student, uh, school student activity warrant number thirty-three, four, one, seven, dated ten eleven, twenty twenty-three for five hundred and seventy dollars. That's primarily for a basketball summer league, uh, program for our varsity ball players. In addition, uh, fiscal year high school, twenty-four, high school student activity warrant number three, four, one, eight, dated also ten eleven, twenty twenty-three for twenty-three hundred and forty-six dollars and one cents, one cent. And I want to emphasize this one is very important because it includes the dunk seat. Um, coming up for our unity week, I believe. Uh, fiscal year twenty-four, middle school student activity warrant three, four, one, nine, dated ten eleven, twenty twenty-three for seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, essentially this closes out, uh, yearbook expense and responsibility for, uh, F for twenty twenty-three. Yeah, fiscal year twenty-four, eight accounts payable warrant, three, four, two, zero, dated ten eleven, twenty twenty-three for a bigger amount, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. For any details on that, please, uh, refer to the minutes and, um, whatever, the spreadsheet relative to it. And then finally fiscal year twenty-four, ACH, um, I don't know what ACH stands for, accounts payable warrant, three, four, two, one, dated ten eleven, twenty twenty-three, that's for thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-four cents. Uh, would people like to, and I don't have any detail on that either. Too many to try to list. Um, would the committee be willing to accept all five together? Does anyone want to talk about basketball, uh, summer schedule or any other individual one? And I'll accept a motion to accept all of them as one vote. And I'm sorry, but I don't have a, I don't have a cumulative amount for how much we're spending today, but someone else can add them up. Did you make a, Heather?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna, I was just noting that it doesn't look like anyone wants to separate them. So I'll make a motion to approve them all.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. In that event, uh, any more discussion? Somebody has to comment on the dunk seat, Doug. Is our principal gonna do it? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I'd like to comment that I'm not a huge fan of being there, but when there's, uh, student, uh, enough student pressure, well, you know, you end up caving. So see how that goes.
Good for you. All right, without further ado, uh, all, I need a roll call vote to accept this. I'll start with Laura Lee Adams.
Yes.
Thank you. Janice Katsoulis?
Yes.
Cliff Spacher?
Yes.
John Erminger?
Yes.
Uh, Heather Katsoulis?
Yeah.
Um, I think it's just myself. Is that correct?
And Wendy.
Wendy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me go back to this. Wendy Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, Bill Tom. Another unanimous vote. It's so, so heartening to get these votes. And general business. Uh, this specifically, we have to start this off with, um, discussion of the Unit A settlement. The committee has reached a settlement agreement with, uh, Unit A. And we need authorization at this time to both, uh, ratify the, the contract and give the chair Jane a, the, um, authority to sign the collective bargaining agreement for the district. So I would like, uh, a motion to accept the contract as negotiated with Unit A. Is that a, uh, enough of a, a motion, Brian?
Yeah, the language is actually right on the contract. Um, I'm sorry, right on the, in the business item itself that the, um,
Discussion about Unit A settlement agreement and authorization to allow the chair to sign the collective bargaining agreement vote. Is that it?
Yes.
And that is the motion. Will someone make the motion?
I will, I'll some of.
Thank you, Heather. I need a second too.
I'll second.
Thank you, Cliff, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, with that, Jan, I need, uh, a roll call vote in all of these instances. Janice, Janice Katsoulis?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Laura Lee Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Wendy Thompson.
Abstained.
You abstain. Thank you. Um, John Erminger.
Yes.
Is Matt Lord with us?
Yes. I've been there.
Oh, you, all right, Matt. Is able to, uh, is a participant in this particular vote because he's a repres- a voting representative for the towns from the select boards of each town. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you voted in the affirmative?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Um, Heather? Katsoulis?
Yeah.
And thinking I've mentioned everyone but myself, uh, yes.
Miss me, Bill.
Oh.
Clifford Spatcher.
Clifford Spatcher. I'm sorry, you're in the dark so much that sometimes I can't see you. There you are.
Sorry.
And you were, yes. Thank you. That makes it, uh, I'm sorry, we did have an abstention. Majority rules. Uh, the Unit A contract is accepted by the committee. There will be some um, language discussion between two attorneys, I believe, but that is, should not affect the, the whole agreement. Is that correct, Brian?
It, it's just formatting now. The language is also, so it's just a matter of getting it into a format, uh, as a, a publicly observed, you know, a publicly, um, disseminated contract and to get Jane's signature as well as Heidi's signature on the contract. I wanted to say thank you to Matt Lord um, for his participation in this process. And I know we still have a little ways to go with Unit C and, and Matt has been helpful there. But Matt, thank you for your, uh, your insight and your thoughtfulness and also, um, for the time and effort that you've put in.
Uh, you're welcome, Brian. It's, it's been great to work with, you know, all the folks through the process. Um, pleased to help you. You, y'all have a good night.
You too. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. I also want to thank, uh, the negotiating committee from the, uh, subcommittee, from the school committee. And I do want to thank, uh, the teachers for their patience and perseverance in this issue. And with that, I'd like to move on to the presentation of the, uh, elementary school improvement plans. And this will be something that after the plans, the committee needs to vote to accept. And I guess we're starting with Hillcrest. Is Hillcrest ready to go?
Yes, I'm ready to go. I'm Sarah Burstein and Hillcrest principal, and, um, thank you for having me. I'm just gonna share my screen and start the slideshow. Okay, so this is the Hillcrest 2023, 2024 School Improvement Plan. You'll be familiar with these goals because they are the same goals that we had last year. So most of our initiatives are either refined from last year or, um, or something new and different, but much of it will be familiar to many of you. Um, you'll also hear this goal across all of the other school improvement plans. So the first goal is around family engagement and I am not going to read every goal to you because I feel like you can all read this. I think the initiatives are more interesting. Uh, and in the interest of time for my colleagues who are going to have to go through the same presentation. So I hope that's okay. Um, our first initiative is to hold all school meetings each month from September through May. Each of our all school meetings will feature a presentation of learning from each grade level, which means that all classrooms will lead a presentation three times during the school year. Oops, sorry about that. Uh, Initiative B is around the implementation of the second step social emotional learning curriculum. You may remember that we had a committee that reviewed social emotional learning curricula last year. Second step was the one that's chosen for all of the elementary schools. So we will be implementing this year and we will be engaging families through the consistent distribution of the second step home link newsletters in both English and Spanish. In addition, I'm going to seek to engage families in learning more about the second step by offering a presentation at our, um, after our November all school meeting. I may however also do this at, um, November parent conferences. So forgive me, I didn't add that part in there, but going to try to offer two opportunities in November for families to learn more about SEL. Uh, Initiative C is that in collaboration with the other elementary schools in the district, uh, Hillstra- Hillcrest staff members will plan to participate in district-wide curriculum nights. It'll be a literacy night at Hillcrest in November and math night at Sheffield in March. Science night at Yale in May. So this will be collaboration across the district. I'm really wanting to emphasize the alignment of our curricula across all three elementary schools. And Initiative D around family engagement is that an attendance committee will meet regularly to review student attendance um, and to ensure ongoing problem solving, um, around children whose attendance is not meeting expectations, finding ways to engage parents and support them. Goal number two is around student engagement. And, um, again, this is another one that's connected to the second step curriculum. So all Hillcrest educators will support the impl- implementation of the second step curriculum through the consistent use of the step problem-solving routine throughout the school day. Um, what I want to emphasize here is that classroom teachers will be implementing the second step curriculum. This initiative is about using a particular second step problem-solving routine across all of our faculty members, meaning that, um, we'll ensure that our paraprofessionals, our specialist teachers, our special educators, those who don't have a, a dedicated opportunity to teach the curriculum will have opportunities to implement this problem-solving routine. Initiative B around student engagement is that our first graders will study community activism and will plan and implement an age-appropriate service project that benefits the Hillcrest community. We, um, have begun this work in previous years. Two years ago, our Hillcrest first graders advocated for, um, the establishment of trashcans on our playgrounds. And last year, the Hillcrest first graders advocated for, um, brand-new buddy benches on our two playgrounds. And we were able to purchase these buddy benches through a really wonderful collaborative effort of Friends of Hillcrest and, uh, the Turner's Falls Alumni Association. So that was really exciting. Looking forward to what our first grade activists come up with this year. Goal number three is around growth and achievement. And in this, you'll see some alignment with the other elementary schools as well. These initiatives focus on collection of learning data as well as consistent data meetings. So you'll see that Initiative A focuses on kindergarten and first grade and the different types of mathematics data that we'll be collecting to inform instruction. Initiative B is around kindergarten and first grade literacy data and data meetings. And again, the instructional decisions that are made based on that data. And then Initiative C is about our preschool educators, their data. It's a little bit different. Uh, understandably, because the developmental levels of preschoolers are such that we're not going to be using the same kind of data collection, but we will be using our preschool team meetings to review data, um, and make appropriate decisions for our students. Goal number four is around great appropriate instruction. Um, Initiative A is about kindergarten and first grade educators having the opportunity to participate at least on curriculum summit this year. You may recall that we've had curriculum summits the past few years. Last year was focused on wit and wisdom primarily. Um, but this year, teachers will have other choice. Some may choose to focus on the new SEL curriculum or math or literacy. It's really up to them. Uh, Initiative B is about our specials teachers. So that is arts at P E, at STEM, uh, at library, at music. Uh, and that's about developing units of instructions based on the DESI standards for their domain. Initiative C is about grade level teams meeting to review implementation of wit and wisdom and G O's at Bridges. Initiative D is about revitalizing our student support team process, uh, which began last year and continues this. Goal number five is around inclusion and equity. And we have four initiatives, um, related to that. Uh, the first one is about the implementation of the second step curriculum. And with the goal of two lessons per week for the first half of the school year and one lesson per week for the second half of the school year. Initiative B is about expanding the signage in our main entry area to include welcome information posted in English, Spanish, and French to reflect the languages spoken by our students. Uh, we have a very small, 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 meaning one student right now speaking French, but we'd like to add that. Um, Initiative C is about our Hillcrest Friday newsletter being distributed via email and on the school website in English and Spanish. And then Initiative D is about, um, hosting family read-alouds featuring texts from our diverse book collection once a week, uh, once a month at all school meeting. Once a week would be a lot. That is the quick overview of the Hillcrest School Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024. And I welcome any of your questions.
Thank you, Sarah. It might, um, thank you very much for the presentation. We're not able to see if anybody's raising their hand. You might want to shut off the sharing.
I will do that. In a minute. It's been a while. We haven't been virtual. Oh, it looks like Tina helped me out. Thanks, Tina. Okay, John, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I, uh, is wit and wisdom, I hope it's not based on Lucy Corkins. Is, is that correct?
Wit and wisdom is, um, is not based on Lucy Corkins. No, wit and wisdom, um, is based on the science of reading. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Heather?
Any other, any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Um, I'm sure you'll keep us posted on all of them, but I'm really interested in hearing what your first grade class chooses as their community engagement project. So please let us know.
I absolutely will. It's been really exciting to see what they come up with.
Sarah, I got a quick question.
Sure. Hi, Cliff.
Hey, on the inclusion part of it, is there gonna be a part for non-verbal as well?
Can you be specific to, um, which initiative you're talking about, please?
Uh, like when the stuff you're posting in the entrances, are there gonna be something for non-verbal kids to communicate as well?
You know what? That's a really good suggestion, Cliff. Thank you. Um, I hadn't thought of that, but I know how to make it happen based on some other ways that we're including those visual supports like on our playground. So thank you. And yes, I will update the school improvement plan. That is a really important idea. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And next I'd like to ask Sheffield Principal Carrie Heathwaite to share her screen, screen, squeen, screen to present the, um, Sheffield Elementary School Improvement Plan.
Good evening, everyone. Give me just a second here to share and rearrange things on my screen. Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry. Hits the wrong button. Sorry about that. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us to share our school improvement plans. Um, I am going to try not to spend too much time repeating what Ms. Burstein said. As you know, um, Dr. Houston, Ms. Burstein and I work very closely, uh, together to make sure that we are, um, collaborating as district elementary schools. And so you'll see some overlaps of our school improvement plans. Um, so for goal number one, for family engagement, um, it's really important to me that we are communicating through a wide variety of means with our families. And so that goal will remain, um, in as Initiative A in goal number one. Um, and so we do that in a wide variety, including the Remind app, Class Dojo, um, weekly newsletters, monthly newsletters from teachers, um, as well as the traditional phone calls and emails. Um, as Sarah mentioned, we're gonna host three district-wide elementary curriculum nights. Um, this came after a lot of community feedback, um, about how much they enjoyed having the ma- math night here last year at Sheffield. So we're, um, super excited to collaborate and host at each elementary school this year. Um, one of my, uh, most important things is that we are communicating all of the amazing things that are happening with our families. And so I want to make sure that we increase those conversations about the growth and learning that's happening here at Sheffield in a wide variety of communication ways. Um, I love my Friday newsletter, um, and you know, I love to showcase all of the wonderful things that are happening. Um, and make sure that we're also recognizing our staff and students regularly in that Friday newsletter. And then, um, as a committee, we have an attendance committee here at Sheffield, and we continue to look at student attendance and tardies and the impact that makes on their education, um, and reach out to families to make sure that we're supporting them. Um, and stressing the importance of regular school attendance at school and how that impacts student learning. Goal number two is student engagement. So again, we talked already in goal number one, um, about families and making sure we're sharing with families, but this is also making sure that the students, um, have their work displayed in bulletin boards and our Friday newsletter. Um, it's much opportunity for them to be able to share their thinking and learning, um, with our families and the community. Um, also, it's really important that they are then expressing themselves. And so they'll, we're gonna find opportunities for them within the classroom as well as at these district-wide curriculum nights, again, for them to showcase what they've learned. Students work in collaborative learning groups. And so we have student-centered, um, classroom settings to increase communication skills, social emotional skills, um, and to develop higher order thinking. Sarah had already mentioned that the committee last year adopted or voted for, and we adopted as a curriculum, the second step curriculum. And so, um, for the first half of the school year, students at Sheffield are getting, and all grade levels, two to five, are getting two lessons each week um, in which they are, you know, focusing on the second, second curriculum and then how to then, you know, practice those strategies across all settings in our building throughout our day. Goal number three is similar to Ms. Burstein. So I'm gonna be brief on it, but we are holding our literacy and our math data meetings three times a year, where we look at students' assessments. We look at instructional groupings and then we plan those instructional approaches. We also have a weekly Tuesday team time, um, in which teachers, grade-level teachers are planning lessons, analyzing student data. Um, MCAS data was just distributed so that they can look at that data, um, and then adjust, adjust their instructional practices. Also new to us this year is Linkit. Um, I am familiar with Linkit from my past education experience and I'm really excited for the reports that can be generated for our teachers to use, again, analyzing all data and then applying it to directly into student instruction. So it's exciting to adopt Linkit in the district. And then finally, um, our grades two and three are going to be using Dibbles to monitor the early literacy and early reading skills and then to target specific literacy instruction. And goal number four, um, is we're gonna continue this work. So we have a consultant, Alex Hersberg, who's been working with us um, and our SST process, our tiered system of support. Um, and so this is something they're pretty passionate about. I mean, if you're in our building, you will definitely see it. We spent a lot of time at the end of last school year developing consistent building-wide expectations with common language across all staff in the building. When you visit Sheffield, you see them posted clearly on our walls. Um, and so students are very aware of our expectations. And again, the language coming from me is the same as a classroom teacher, as a paraprofessional, as a cafeteria staff. Our entire Sheffield team uses this common language. Um, where we have those expectations using our responsive classroom practices. Um, and then our SST process is identifying students who are in need of additional support. Um, and then coming up with strategies to help them gain success, whether it's academically or behaviorally, we could support them in a wide variety of settings. And Alex Hersberg will continue to support our process with that. And finally, goal number four, um, I pulled out the book. We did a book study. Oh, you might not be able to see me. Actually, I wasn't thinking because I'm sharing my screen. But I pulled out the book. Last year, we did a district, um, book study on culturally responsive teaching for multilingual learners. And so if you see my book, it's like tabbed full of post-it notes. Um, and so it's really important this year, we're going to look at, you know, how is it that we're making, meeting the needs of all of our learners in our school community to build. Um, a strong and cohesive school community. So we'll be using some of those, um, strategies and best practices for that. We are going to develop, so I actually, I'm just. Get off a little bit on task, off task here. We had student council elections over the past couple of weeks here at Sheffield. Um, the posters were amazing, their platform speeches were amazing, and then they voted in a, in a real life adult type scenario, taking it very seriously about confidential voting. And so we had, you know, individual spots set up for them to cast their votes. And we on Friday announced our student council representatives in the grade four and five classrooms. So we'll be working on a lot of initiatives, including, um, a school climate survey that staff and families will be able to take and provide feedback on how we can consistently. Um, improve our practices here at Sheffield. We also focus a lot on staff and making sure that we have safe and respectful meetings to be able to engage our students in dialogue about race, culture and equity. And along that goal, we are continuing to increase our diverse and inclusive text collection. Um, and making sure that has fiction, nonfiction and biographies. And we do have a brand new book closet that houses these, and they're available to all of our staff to be able to check out and use. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen so I can see if anybody has. Any questions and like Sarah, how come it's, oh, there it goes. I was gonna say like Sarah, it's been a while since I stopped sharing. Anyone have any questions about the Sheffield School Improvement Plan?
Thank you very much, Carrie.
Oh, it looks like Heather might have raised her hand. Yes, Heather.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. Um, Paige has left Sheffield, but I still love your newsletter, so I check them every Friday. So you're doing a great job. It's so, so great to see what the schools are doing this past week. Or maybe it was the week before, just seeing, um, the art is really quite amazing. Castro Santos is, is really wonderful and the kids do such great work. It's nice to see everything shared there.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Well, if you think of any questions at any point, don't hesitate to reach out to me and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Carrie. And to present the Gill Elementary School Improvement Plan, I'd like to introduce Principal Dr. Walter Houston. You're muted, Walter. So that's how long it's been since you've been on a Zoom. You can't figure out how to unmute, huh?
Okay, got that part. Now I'm trying to do the shared part. Hopefully this is gonna work. It's not working. It doesn't seem to want to work.
Walter, I can share it from my screen if you'd like.
Okay, if you could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hang on just one second.
Okay. Also, if you remember a year ago, I had a huge neck brace around my neck. A lot has happened over the past year. Um, and so we're very excited to share the plan. A couple of things. As we go through, I'm not going to read the whole plan because you have it. Um. We go back. Oh, there it is. Okay, so the first goal. Um. Is, and I'm just going to kind of give you a summary. I'm not going to read each one of the initiatives because this afternoon, when I was going through it, I discovered that. There were some common goals that went through it, and many of the initiatives, you're going to be like, oh, wait a minute, I already heard Sarah and, um, Carrie talk about them. So the first one is really looking at growth and achievement and focusing on our assessments that we, um, will be giving throughout the year. Both DIBELS and our A V M R math assessment. Also looking at our E L A and our math MCAST scores. And throughout the year, looking at them and then making the adjustments that we need to make in our, um, instruction and looking at how students are growing. Do we need to add interventions to help those students? What do we need to help those students along the way? So really, all four of those initiatives are really focusing on assessment and using that assessment to drive our instruction. And to help students with areas of difficulty. So next goal. Um, the next one is looking at student achievement and I'm student engagement. And one of the things that we're really folk, we're really excited about at Gill is this past year, we were able to get a grant to be, um, to do a farm to school initiative. Um, a couple of members of the staff went to Shelburne Farms this summer and participated in their farm to school, um, institute. And we brought back many ideas. We came up with a year-long plan, but we also came up with a five-year plan of how we can have this farm to school initiative. And part of that is looking at how we can. Engage students to be more outside. For those of you that have been to Gill Elementary, know that we have a beautiful campus. Um, and wanting to get our students back outside. Um, one of the things that all of this is looking at is farm to school, but it's also looking at our project-based learning. Before the pandemic, that was something that Gill was extremely proud of, was their project-based learning and their, um. Outdoor education programs. And then the pandemic hit and all of that got shelved. And the staff is really excited and parents are excited about bringing all of that back. So really this year is starting to engage our students in bringing back project-based learning, bringing back our outdoor education programs. And then part of that is the farmer's school program. Um, the last initiative has nothing to do with that really, but it's one that you've heard Sarah and Carrie already talked about. Is looking at attendance and wanting to improve our attendance rate, especially those students who have been labeled as chronic absentee, chronic absentee. Um, percentage is about 10%, so it's like 18 days. Um, and wanting to bring that, that, um, number down at least 20% from last year's data. Next one is family engagement. Again, you've heard Sarah and Carrie talk about having, um, an all-district night focused on E L A. At, um, Hillcrest, math at Sheffield, and then for us, looking at more of a STEM night, a science night. Um, so that we're going to be in the plan, in the process of planning all that. Also creating classroom contact books so parents and families can contact each other. And then the last is again, looking at that attendance data. Um. To really bring down that number of chronically absent children. Goal four is really looking at inclusion and equity. And really, one of the things like the other two schools that we're doing is really building up our collection of diverse, um, topics that we want to share with students. And it's really for our students is providing those windows and mirrors of what is happening in the world. And children's literature allows us to be able to do that. So we're looking at building up our collection, not just with picture books for the little ones. But also texts that would engage our fifth and sixth graders as well. Um, and then the last one is. Goal appropriate instruction, um, really looking at our SST process. Last year, we did a lot of work on making sure our SST process is consistent and that we have. Forms that we follow and a process that we follow, and we're very proud of what we came up with. But we want to even go deeper this year and really look at how we can create, um, short-term goals for the, for those students. And really collect the data that we can back up to the initiatives are working, the, the interventions are actually working for them. And again, the whole idea of the, um, literacy assessments and the math assessments, really using that information to drive our instruction and drive the, um, intervention that we want to do with children. So we continue to see their growth go up even higher than it did last year. So that is it in a very quick nutshell. So any questions from our audience? I think we're all clear.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Walter. And if there are no questions, um, I would like to, uh, introduce. High school, middle school principal Christopher Barnes, and to be able to put a face to the name, we introduced, uh, new high school, middle school. Assistant Principal Lauren Messina on paper, but I did want folks to be able to put, uh, a face to that name. Uh, hi Lauren. If you could wave. And Christopher, are you okay to share your screen?
I should be. Yeah, thank you. Um, welcome, Lauren and, uh, school committee members. Thank you for having us. Let's see, uh-oh. How's that?
Got it.
Great. Um, hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. Um, the goals that you'll see on our school improvement plan again are consistent with the goals that you see across the district. Really in line with the district goals as well. So I'm going to, uh, focus on, uh, doing a review of the initiatives. We, um, have a newly formed school council. Um, which is an important body in assisting the school administration as well as, uh, school staff members. In, um, developing the school improvement plan. So I want to thank the school council. Uh, they came up with some great ideas, which we certainly included, starting with the first initiative under goal one. Which was that we will institute a positive behavior intervention system, um, throughout the middle school. Each grade level would have their own, um, P B I S system, well, P B I S. Uh, sixth grade is off and running, and we're still working on seventh and eighth grade, but, uh, certainly we're going to have these, um. Intervention systems in place, uh, this year. They'll all look a little different, but the intention there is to encourage our students, uh, to do great things, build, uh, positive relationships and those foundational skills that they need. Um, whoops. The second initiative here is, uh, continued from last year. You may have seen last week, I sent out a, um, a passive consent around social emotional health diagnostics. Um, and the counselors will initiate counseling groups. Um, they want to be able to efficiently and effectively target students with concerns. Um, and really help, help support our students in the needs that they have so that they can improve in their, um, educational, uh, work in their academics. Uh, we had, this is continuation of goal one. We had, uh, total four initiatives here. Again, this initiative, uh, C is a continuation with some changes as well, some updates. The, um. Great Falls Middle School staff will continue to deliver a circle of power and respect curriculum, which is an advisory curriculum. To build a sense of community and support students of social emotional learning and the high school. Um, teachers will also deliver an advisory curriculum. Just so you know, this is something we look at each year and we want to do better. Um, so basically that's, that's what it's about. We have, uh, groups of teachers meeting to discuss this and, uh, leaders in that, uh, in those groups. In order to re-energize the curriculum and, uh, work to meet our goals. And then this final initiative in goal one is, is, uh, lofty, but it's something we really hope to accomplish. Um, that by the second semester, we will aspire to train students become, to become peer mediators. We had a group of, um, I think eight educators, um, trained by Franklin Regional Council of Governments in, um. Restorative practices during August of 23, and we want to take that and we want to push it forward into our student, uh, student body. Goal two, um, we had three initiatives here. Last year, we had, uh, parent-student, um, guardian surveys, which we didn't meet that goal. And, uh, we discussed this at school council, um, and decided that we keep this goal, only we pare it back. Last year, we had four surveys that, that were, um, listed here, but this year we're just going to have the two, and we expect to accomplish that goal this year. The second initiative here is around the extravaganza. Some of you may be familiar with that. That's a, um, an event that we started a couple of years ago to really. Um, attract students here to Turner Falls High School, um, both from our middle school and from the communities surrounding our school. But we want to move this to November. Um, it had been, um, held in March the last two years. We want to move to, uh, November, just as the goal states to attract a greater audience and promote our school earlier in the year. And then the final one here is to host a talent show for Great Falls Middle School. This, um, some of the school committee members, um, informed us that this had been done in the past, but it hasn't been done in a few recent years. So we want to develop that, that pride for our school, again, keeping students here and have an event, uh, for the middle school. Goal three. Um, initiative A is continuation of some work we did last year. Um, I think it's really important that we have a great focus on writing throughout our school. The students know that it's really important. Um, to, to adhere to conventions and to be good writers. So this work continues. It's across all departments. Um, different departments, you know, if you're English, you're focusing a little different than you are if you're in art. But all the, all departments use data to target skills. Um, that groups or individuals are struggling with, and they respond with approaches to writing, you know? In art, it looks like one certain kind of thing. You're talking about your, your, your artwork and describing that in your thought process and in English. Um, it's different than that. We're really focused on conventions and, and analysis and that sort of thing, but this is across the school and it's really important work. The second initiative here is dedicating in-service time to developing, sharing and planning for tier two, tier one and tier two academic supports and strategies. Um, again, tier one is the academic supports and strategies that we use within the classroom. Tier two may or may not be in the classroom, but the idea is that we want to be able to focus on which groups need which. Tier one is, uh, for everybody. Tier two is more, you're going to see a smaller group that could happen in the classroom. It may happen outside the classroom depending. Our fourth goal here has three initiatives. Um, again, the first initiative is a continuation. We're using that I-ready data to look at student performance and then target the improvement of student performance with, um, instructional design and remediation. Part of what we do for the day-to-days, um, is focused on the I-ready, but also focused on the writing that we're doing. Likewise, with the second initiative here, using MCAST data to target the improvement of student performance. What we want to do here is we want to make sure that we're supporting all of our students, no matter when they're taking the MCAST, whether it be, um, with the big group, uh, in the main. Um, administrations in the spring, or whether it be on the retesting in November, for example. We want to make sure that they're getting what they need and they're able to pass that test. Um, the third initiative here, initiative C. Is something that we've already started doing this year. Again, it's in the, um, in-service time, began this, uh. I guess just a few weeks ago, I can't remember right now. Um, developing, sharing and planning for implementation of tier one and two academic supports. Uh, teachers have worked together in groups to, to share their strategies, but also we, we start out with a presentation for everybody to focus our work. And then we break up in groups that are sometimes, um, cross, uh, disciplines, um, and across the grade levels as well. Moving on to goal five, um, another initiative that the school council came up with was initiative A. To develop a kindness and anti-bully campaign to improve school climate and have a student set culture of the school. I want to, um, say that also independently, our new assistant principal, Lauren Messina, is really jazzed about starting a kindness campaign. So, um, we're going to welcome Lauren to working on that. She's super excited and wants to get her hands involved in that. Um, also initiative B is something that came to light as a result of. Of something missing, frankly. Um, sometimes we can be really focused on a lot of stuff that goes on in schools and, and miss some really important items such as nine 11. School council, we discussed this, and we're going to put together a committee that focuses on intentional celebrations and acknowledgement of holidays, such as the ones you see here. Um, we want to have meaningful understanding and appreciation for life outside of the classroom, which has shaped our society. And I'm really glad that they brought that up and our, uh, folks are willing to work on that. And then finally, um, initiative C, educators will dedicate in-service time to developing, sharing, improving our pedagogy. Um, with anti-racist, anti-bias, culturally responsive and restorative and inclusivity practices. Um, again, this was, um, part of the in-service time. We've mapped it out for the year. This is one of the, uh, focuses that we'll have for that time. So we can accomplish this important initiative. That was sort of quick. Felt like it went fast. Um, let me see if I can figure out how to stop sharing here. Did I do it? Did it work? There. And if anybody has any questions. I have to cycle through. To see if there are any hands.
No, I'll just say, um, for one. That, uh, I appreciate the. Any focus you can give to the writing element because I think that it's cross-discipline. Uh, skill where you learn to, one, develop your thoughts, two, organize them, and then three. Lay them out so somebody else can understand them. And that's how it makes it cross-discipline for sure. But anyway, that's just a small part of what you presented and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. We appreciate that as well. It's, um, I, I also believe in conjunction with that, it's really important to have it as. Something that our school does, that is important to our school.
Thank you again, Christopher and Lauren.
Sure.
Bill, we'll need a motion in a second for the school committee to vote to accept the annual school improvement plans.
For both the elementary and the secondary level.
Yep.
Is there a motion? I also moved. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Three people seconded it. I don't know which one was first. Okay, thank you. With that, we need a roll call vote again. So Laura Lee, will you start?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, John Erminger.
Yes.
I should do this the appropriate way, read them off here so I don't miss somebody. Heather Katsoulis?
Yes.
Janice Katsoulis?
Yes.
Wendy Thompson? Thank you, Clifford Spacher?
Yes.
And myself, Phil Tone. Thank you all. The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
And that brings us to addressing pandemic learning loss. And the MCAS result presentation. Who's doing that?
Bill, with your permission, I'd like to dismiss the principals so they don't show up to work all bleary-eyed in the morning.
Too late for that.
It's okay with me. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Women.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Au revoir.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to talk about our MCAS and accountability scores for this year. In the school committee packet in the agenda linked is a pretty lengthy presentation. With a lot of different scores and reports from the state and I've kind of shrunk it and pulled out kind of some of the essentials. To go over with you tonight. So I'm going to jump right in. So over the past month or so, the Department of Education has been sharing out information about accountability reports and MCAS scores. Across the state and myself and Brian attended a couple of different webinars on information that looks at some trends across the state. So I wanted to start with that and just highlight that the state really has emphasized. Looking at this year's report, specifically the accountability report, because this is the first time since two thousand nineteen that we've had a full accountability report from the state. And to compare to two thousand nineteen, the pre-pandemic times. And so that's what I've done in a number of the slides in this presentation. And there were some trends that the state shared that across the board. It doesn't look like we're sliding backwards anymore. It looks like we're growing. Both in math and ELA data shows that we're making growth and improvements. And no longer kind of in this halted pathway or sliding backwards. Science doesn't look as good as ELA and math across the state, but that is just something that they're recognizing. They really are tied into the current grade through grade three from last year's results or current fourth graders. Because they were in pre-K K that age group when the pandemic hit. And so they're really looking to track this group over time. To determine, you know, what might be some things that this group of students might need more than others. And then there are some places where we still need to make up some ground. Like I said, in science, you'll see that for us and many, many. Schools and districts in the state have struggled a little bit in the science over the past few years. So first I'm going to talk about accountability and then I'm going to talk about MCAS results. So both are very important, but they're a little bit different. So I want to make sure that I explain it clearly. So accountability, like I said, hasn't had a full report since two thousand nineteen, since before the pandemic. Last year, they did a basic accountability report. And what happens for accountability is it's the schools and the district. So we'll have a whole district accountability. Report and then each school has an accountability report. You get a classification as to whether you need assistance or you don't need assistance from the state. So that's the overall classification. And then each year, based on prior data. And the data has to do with MCAS scores, so achievement, MCAS growth, attendance. And then for high school, it has to do with advanced coursework, graduation rates, so a number of different factors. So it's not just the test itself. They get, they give you a specific target they want you to meet. And so then you basically. If you get seventy-five percent or higher, it means you've met or exceeded the targets that they have set. So that's just kind of some information for what we're going to talk about in the next couple of slides. So as you can see, this is our district accountability report. So we are not requiring assistance or intervention. Which is wonderful. And overall, we've made moderate progress towards our targets. And you'll see that I'll compare to two thousand nineteen. So again, they really want us to not necessarily look from this year to last year. To think about, you know, how are we in kind of that true pandemic learning loss recovery? So forty-two percent, we were forty-one percent in two thousand nineteen, so we're right around the same place. Which is great. That means that there hasn't been a lot of loss overall in accountability. And you'll notice that there's no percentile. Their districts don't get a percentile, but the schools do. So I'm going to go into percentile next. So you get a rating of your percentile. So previously, the. The accountability percentage, so if I go back real quick. So the progress towards improvement on the targets, that's basically our district against our district from the past couple of years. Where percentile is looking at our schools compared to schools in similar grade spans and how we do. In comparison to other schools. So you can see down the right side, all of our accountability percentiles. And it goes from one to ninety-nine, obviously ninety-nine being the best. And again, it's not calculated for districts. It's really calculated for schools. And that's because districts look so different. It's really hard to compare one district to another. But as you can see, if the measurements of all of our elementary schools and our middle school actually get compared in the big group together, any school that's K to eight. And then high schools compared for a nine to twelve school. So I'm going to go through each school briefly. So Sheffield, so the top section is the accountability information for this year. And then I compared it. I took the screenshot from two thousand nineteen. So really excited for Sheffield, seventy-seven percent towards progress, towards our targets. So again, at seventy-five percent and above, it means you've met or exceeded the targets. The slideshow that is linked in the school committee report or agenda. Has the screenshot of exactly how we got those scores, if you want to look into that a little bit more. Our percentile for accountability is nineteen. So it's, you know, on the lower edge, but at the same time, against how we were compared to ourselves in Sheffield, we've made some really great gains here. And you can see again, in two thousand nineteen, we were at sixty percent towards our targets and fourteen percentile. So if they're using two thousand nineteen is that pre-pandemic comparison, you know, we've made some really strong gains at Sheffield. Gill Elementary, you may have seen a little article in the paper, as well as some communication on our social media that Gill was. Awarded the school of recognition. So only sixty-six schools in the state out of basically thirteen hundred schools were recognized for. Basically moving in their targets and also in their growth and accountability. And so awesome job, Gill. We're super excited. Ninety percent, meaning that we met ninety percent of the targets that were set for us for Gill Elementary. And that was from forty percent in the pre-pandemic time. And then our accountability percentile jumped up to fifty percent, which is phenomenal. So congratulations, Gill. Keep up the good work. And you'll notice that there won't be a Hillcrest report because Hillcrest doesn't get accountability because it doesn't have MCAS testing. So we won't talk about Hillcrest. But for the middle school, again, the top is our two thousand twenty-three. So substantial progress towards targets. This is really great. So fifty-six percent is right in that middle range. It's, you know, above the fifty percent, which is what we want to see. It's not as low as it was in two thousand nineteen, so we made substantial versus moderate. But our accountability percentile is still at eleven. So you know, that's definitely an area we want to look at. Thinking about how our students are doing with their MCAS scores and testing. So, you know, as we talked about, there's a lot of positives, but there's definitely things we want to keep our eyes on. And so that's one thing for sure. And then for the high school, high school was definitely not as strong as we were hoping. We had limited or no progress towards our targets. And we were at the fifteen percentile in accountability. So again, if we think about the three or really Hillcrest is not included. So the two elementary schools and Great Falls Middle School, they're all considered one kind of grouping of schools because they're K to eight. So they're kind of all in comparison really with any other K to eight school. And then the high schools compared to any nine through twelve school in the state. So again, not the growth we want to see at this point. However, you know, we're going to be digging into looking at the data a little bit more closely to see where things are landing. For the high school. So that's all accountability, which again is really the representation of how we're doing as a district and individually as schools. And so now I'm going to jump into some MCAS data. And again, I have a lot of screenshots on the. The presentation linked to the agenda, but I just wanted to do some quick highlights here. So we didn't look at every single grade for every single subject. So again, achievement, the state will measure meeting and exceeding. So what is the percentage of meeting and exceeding? That's what they want to see. And so this is a comparison for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. So you can see in some places. You know, for example, in third grade, we were did better in our percentage of meeting and exceeding. But not in every case. In some cases, we were below. In some cases, we were significantly below where we were. And this is for ELA in particular. Now, I did do a little comparison. I was going to present the kind of let's track a grade of students across the board. Because this is looking at now two thousand twenty-three third grade versus two thousand nineteen third grade, and that's a different cohort of students. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic and the multiple years of no MCAS data, it was really hard to really make a comparison. But over the next couple of years, I think we'll be able to really track students as they go from grade to grade. So this is a visual of that data so that you can kind of see, you know, our third grade is a little bit higher. This year than we have been in two thousand nineteen, and then we're just a little bit below in the other areas. And again, this is just the percentage of meeting and exceeding students earning in ELA. Same type of presentation for math. You'll notice there's a couple of places where math were significantly above. Which is great. We're really making some progress specifically in our early ages for math. And a visual representation of that is here as well. So the red is two thousand twenty-three, so our current past year, and the blue is two thousand nineteen. And then science STE, so for fifth, eighth and tenth, those are the only grades that take the assessment. And again, you'll see there's a significant decrease in where we are in two thousand twenty-three. This is representative of the state too. So it's very similar in what the state looks like for the science MCAS testing as well. Now, this is my favorite part to look at. You know, there's a lot of information here. We looked, the past was about achievement, the past couple of slides, but this is about growth. And this really stands out to me because achievement is one component, right? How well we do, how many meeting or exceeding scores we get. But what I think is really valuable is the growth. So I highlighted in green, kind of green background. Anything that was forty or sixty or above. So if it's between forty and sixty, a score of a student growth percentile. That means that a student made a year's worth of growth. So where that student was, the last year they took the assessment to where they are now. So you won't see that score for third grade because they've never taken the assessment before. But in fourth grade, they compare to how they did in third grade. So we want students to make a year's worth of growth. And so you can see almost everywhere. We've had that and then the ones that are blue highlighted, we did better than the state. So this is the comparison to the state. So achievement is very important. I value growth as just as much because I think it really talks about individual students. More than talks about a certain grade level at a time. And then just to kind of give us the two thousand nineteen comparison. You can see the highlights are places where we're doing, having a larger growth than we did in two thousand nineteen. So what does this mean? As one of the principals mentioned, that teachers are looking at MCAS data. MCAS data is going to be going out to families. If not, they've already been out sent in the mail. So families can look at the report, but we also want to look at, you know, what we can learn. How can we compare this to our other data we use? So MCAS is a one assessment, but we use, as you heard from the principals, iReady. We're implementing DIBELS assessment this year for our early grades. There's a lot of assessments we do during the school year. And so we often want to look at what's happening with these as well. Because, you know, now we have students going into a new school year. They don't have the same teachers necessarily. And so we want to make sure we're using current data as well. We also want to look at subgroups. So we always want to make sure that we're looking at the subgroups of students and how they're doing compared to other subgroups in the state. As well as what are some needs that certain groups of students may have. And then when we look at accountabilities, there are some things that we can easily take a look at. You know, you heard from every single principal that looking at attendance. Is and absenteeism is a huge component. The state in one of the presentations shared that that's something that is happening nationally across the state. It's not just us. But we're really going to focus on it because, and you think about accountability, it gives you a point. So if this is how we're doing with attendance now. They're going to say, all right, we want you to get this target. And if we really emphasize that, both graduation rates, enrollment and advanced coursework, if we can offer more advanced courses. And get students enrolled, that's going to help with our accountability. In the long run, the accountability really just reflects how well we're doing and what are we able to offer our students. So a lot of, a lot of things we still do with the data. We really dig into individual students. Teachers look at actual questions. What are some questions that groups of students got tripped up on? So that's really what we do now. And then this is up here, you know, if you've got your phone, you want to take a QR codes picture real quick. So you can look at any schools' information across the state. You know, one of the things I didn't get into was looking at the different schools in our local region, just to kind of save on time. But if that's something where the school community is interested, I'm happy to bring that back as another presentation. But at any time, you can look at accountability over the past few years or the current reports for any schools or districts in the state. That the DESI profiles has up there. So. That is the presentation. So I'll stop sharing and take any questions.
Jean, thank you very much. Before, folks may or may not have questions, but I just wanted to take a moment, not only to thank Jean, but. To let you know that the slideshow that she shared is an abbreviated version of what's attached to the agenda. So when you go into the agenda, if you take a longer look. At the more extensive slideshow, you can see a little bit more detailed information. But knowing that the slideshow itself is lengthy, we wanted to abbreviate the presentation and then. Prompt the school committee to look over the information that Jean provided in her slides more extensively that are attached to the agenda. Thank you very much again, Jean. Putting that together. So Bill, I just, I have a little bit of information about the last agenda item, if I could share that.
Sure.
So there's, there's no, no real business associated with the MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees resolutions for tonight. I simply wanted to share the resolutions in the agenda. And with the committee so that we had an opportunity to, for everybody between now and the next meeting to review them. What we typically do is have a discussion and vote. On particular resolutions and that Jane and Heather in attending.
The MASK Mask Conference down in Hyannis.
Will bring our, our school committee's consensus back to that meeting. Okay?
Conference is November sixth, eight through ten.
Through ten, yep.
So the next meeting will give us appropriate time to express our opinion to our voting member who will be Heather.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian. We do have some minutes to approve from the September five, two thousand twenty-three meeting, our last meeting. I'd like to, a motion to accept. So that we can then have any dis- So that we can then have any discussion that there is. Thank you, Heather. Is there a second?
I will second Laurie Lee Adams.
Thank you, Laura Lee. Is there any discussion about it? Any corrections? If not, we'll have a roll call vote. John Erminger?
Yes.
Cliff Spatcher?
Yes.
Laura Lee Adams?
Yes.
Wendy Thompson?
Yes.
Heather Katsoulis? And Janice Katsoulis?
Yes.
And myself, William Tone. Yes, thank you. That is accepted. With that, any agenda requests? I presume that Brian and I and Jane will get together next week. So please contact us any way you can think of. If you have suggestions you'd like to bring forward. And that would include. Oh, Jacqueline, you wanted perhaps to talk about more of the subject you brought up earlier? Or anything else that you'd like to bring forward. It would be nice to, best to have it on the agenda. So that we can discuss it in full and people would know, have some notion to think about. Dates of our next meeting, scheduled meetings. At this point, it's October twenty-fourth and November fourteenth. And are we going to be, yeah, well, the fourteenth will be after. So Jane and Heather will be back in town. From their great getaway. And with that, I think that leads us into the greatest part of the meeting, the adjournment. Is there a motion to, any other topics to discuss? I mean, any other thoughts that? Forget that, forget that. We'll just go straight to the adjournment. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, it's moved and seconded in a different way. We need a roll call vote again. John Erminger?
Yes.
Heather Katsoulis? And Janice Katsoulis? I'll accept that. Wendy Thompson?
Yes.
Laura Lee Adams?
Yes.
Clifford Spatcher?
Yes.
And myself as well. Yes. Thank you all. I think that concludes our meeting and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Good job, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, take it easy.